I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. Welcome. We'll start by introducing ourselves, and if you care to share what you're reading, please do. Jamie, you want to start us off, please?
My name is Jamie Burkhardt, and I am between books right now. Just finished one, and I need to start a new one.
I'm David Ferguson, and I am also between books. I've downloaded one, I have not started. I'll report on it next month.
I'm Chris Harrison. I just finished listening to an audiobook by Erin Entroda-Kelly about going, about the space shuttle Challenger disaster. And I can't remember, we went to the moon, I can't, or we went to space, I can't remember what the name of it was.
And I'm John Walsh. I just started reading a book of poems, Middle Distance by Stanley Plumley. He passed away last year, and this just came out, a book of posthumous poems.
I'm Marilyn Wood, and I'm still working on the book about the Flint water system.
I'm Fred Reissinger. Since our last meeting, I finished Willie Nelson's autobiography, and I have started a book by Richard Haas called The World.
I am Kari Essery, and I have been immersed in reading about Canvas and Microsoft Teams and all kinds of technology things to aid the teachers of MCCSC.
I'm Kathy Loser, and I am reading the Elton John biography, Me.
Thank you. For members of the public who would like to address the board later, there's a sign up sheet on the blue chair there between the two doors in the middle of the room. If you could please sign up there. Our first item is the consent agenda, which we approve minutes, monthly financial report, monthly bills, personnel report, and our board meeting calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions or corrections to the consent agenda items? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And then we'll turn it over to Marilyn for any highlights from the monthly report.
Just a couple. So the, with school beginning again, e-access cards have been delivered to all the schools in the county now. So they went out in advance of when many schools distributed the school-issued iPads. And so we know that a lot of kids got theirs already, and we've seen it in their packets and at home with their smiling faces. So we hope that those will get some, some good use right away. Vital is working on new ways to do some distance learning with their learners and tutors. And last month, they had more than 100 hours of distance learning digitally. And in earlier this year, we purchased several iPads with funds that had been provided to us from the Wall Family Charitable Trust. And they were, they were, they were used for iPads for e-learning, or excuse me, for STEAM learning at Ellisville. And because we aren't open to use these, we asked the trust if we were able to repurpose those funds. And they, for distance learning opportunities, and this would be temporarily. And there was unanimous approval from the trust last week for us to be able to do that. And then one other thing, just to bring to your attention, because this will be ongoing for, for a while. The library really does continue each day to, to figure out new ways that we can ensure health and safety measures in place, following all the CDC and health guidelines. And we've done many things already, including adding and installing plexiglass barriers, purchasing new software for distance services, HVAC improvements, gloves, sanitizers. All of these things were, were unbudgeted expenses. And we are, at this point in time, submitting those under the CARES Act to the county for, we hope for reimbursement. So there will be more things that we will be asking for reimbursement in the future, but we've already submitted in the neighborhood of about, close to $20,000. Any questions that I can answer?
Do you know the timeframe of when you could get a response for the CARES Act reimbursement?
Gary has been in contact with them. Do you want to speak to that, Gary?
Sure. We submitted it last week, and we got feedback right away, basically to ask a few questions and ask for some more detail, which we have provided. But by the time we provided it, I think they got buried with new applications. I, so we've done about everything we can do on our end, so, but I feel pretty confident that everything will go through. And then we'll file each month until the deadline, I think this ends at the end of October.
I know it was very different this year, as so many other things were, but what kind of participation did we have in the summer reading program?
Well, the numbers were down. We did have over a million minutes of reading time that were logged. With the new system that we use, Beanstack, we were able to, to track the number of people who participated and the minutes that they read, if they logged those minutes. So we know we didn't reach as many kids, but we know that we did, I don't have the exact numbers, but we can report on that and will next month.
Any other questions for Marilyn? Okay, we move on to old business, and Gary's gonna update us on the 2021 budget review. Or answer questions, or?
I could do this kind of at the same time I do new business, which is to approve the budget notice.
Okay, so we'll just talk about the budget when we get to it in new business?
And I see the other old business item here is branch planning. I'm not sure what.
That's me.
Okay. You want to, I'll let you do that before I go into new business.
Sounds good.
So I wanted to just update you from a meeting last weekend, again, yesterday. The, the, the work to identify the site requirements and design potential for the new branch library is going to take us longer than we had extended the purchase agreement. So you'll see another extension of that purchase agreement sometime in the coming months. But the, we, we do have a preliminary schedule, but there are any variety of things that get added to it in between now and November before you'll see, again, the, the request to extend that purchase agreement. But right now, we're working on a couple of, of potential designs which actually change the orientation of the building. So where we were previously sited north-south, we will be sited east-west, which significantly reduces any impact on the trees. And it looks quite good at first glance, but we have to, to do some more planning to see how it will work. And obviously, the county will ultimately decide whether or not they would accept that as a subdivision as well. So more info to come.
Any questions on the branch planning?
I just want to comment, I think it was smart of someone to think about just shifting it a little bit would help the trees. So thank you to whoever thought of that little tweak.
Yes, it's significantly different.
Great.
Can I ask, would it be facing then Gordon Pike, or would that be the back of the building?
It would be facing Gordon Pike, but that's one of the questions that we have for the county, because where the new roundabout will go, there's questions about whether or not the county will require us to face Gordon or to face what would effectively be the rotary. So they're, they're initially having a conversation with them just to see what will work, but our preference would be to face Gordon.
I have a suggestion. Don't have two entrances.
We don't, we will not. We'll have just one entrance off of the, back off the rotary.
Right.
They won't let us have one on Gordon.
Okay, moving on to new business. Do we have a motion to approve publication of the notice to taxpayers for the 2021 budget?
So moved.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Gary?
So I've left a copy of the budget notice at your desk. And last month, we went over the first draft of the 2021 budget. We've got a pretty full agenda tonight, so I'm not going to go into as much detail tonight for the revenue and expense unless there are questions. Next month, for the public hearing, I will go over the revenue and expense detail again, so you won't miss anything. Tonight, I'm going to focus on the public notice for the budget that we need to submit prior to the public hearing. The biggest change from the first draft of the budget to the one you're looking at tonight is a reduction of the estimate for the local income tax revenue. DLGF has suggested using 90% of last year's revenue, which we've done. And it reduces the local income tax for 2021 estimate by about $250,000. So last year, the local income tax budget increased from 2019 by about 6.5%. So I guess the point is, we're taking a pretty big hit on local income tax. We haven't seen the final number yet, and we haven't seen the final net assessed value number yet. So a couple of big numbers we're still waiting on. The State Board of Accounts has recommended that for the assessed value estimate, that we use a 15% reduction from last year, which we're using at this point. It makes our rate look higher, and it'll be adjusted when we get it, hopefully before the public hearing. So this notice can be accessed online at budgetnotices.in.gov. This notice has to be submitted to the DLGF at least 10 days before the public hearing. And this notice is also available on the library website. We also publish it in the local papers. So are there any questions on this notice? Yes?
I guess this isn't about the notice. Can I ask a question about the budget?
Absolutely.
Okay, so in light of losing, you know, a good chunk, chunk of change there, have all the numbers in the 2021 budget, like all the line items, reflected those changes yet?
Yes.
They have, okay. And are you able to say, like, did you just take it all off about the same, or did you take big chunks out of some things and not others, or?
As, as far as the spending budget goes, it increased by the growth quotient. It increased, the estimate increased from last year by 4.2%.
Okay.
So we didn't really adjust for the local income tax reduction there. We have accounted for it in our projected cash flow. So instead of a higher projected surplus for 2021, we have a lower projected surplus. So whereas it may have been 1.4 million.
Like this past year.
Mm-hmm. It's, we've reduced that, that estimate.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions for Gary? So we have a motion and a second to approve publication of the notice to taxpayers for the 2021 budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Marilyn, is this next one?
The collection, the collection development policy is yes.
Do we have a motion to approve updates to the collection development policy?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is Greer Carson here to? Welcome, Greer.
Thank you, good evening. Good to see you all. It's been a while since we updated our collection development policy, and we aren't proposing any significant changes this time around. Most changes are syntactical and amount to simple updates in language and/or mission-related statements. The exception is the addition of a statement regarding our digitization program. We propose adding this to the collection development policy for two reasons. First, to clarify for the public what we mean by digitization and how it fits into our collection development strategy. And second, to outline for both the public and for staff, how we evaluate potential digitization projects that may come our way or that we actively pursue. So if there's anything specific I can speak to regarding these updates, I am happy to do so.
Are there any digitization projects coming up soon?
Certainly. Well, we have a small handful we'd like to start right away, and the first and possibly most exciting would be our local school yearbook collection. We have quite a few physical copies of area yearbooks going back all the way to the beginning of the 20th century. And now is a great time to digitize them. We have a plan in place, and we were all ready to go with our metadata standards, and then something happened in March. So we're still doing the metadata prep work, but we haven't sent the materials off for scanning just yet. But we do hope to have that project completed by the end of this year.
What is, on page 108, it mentions one of the criteria for digitization is project can be funded through ACS Digitization Operating Funds?
Yes.
What does ACS stand for?
Access and Content Services. Fancy word for collections, collection management, yeah.
If that's, that may be spelled out elsewhere in the document, but if it's not, you might replace the acronym with the, with the full name.
Do you, have you? I'm sure you've located and approved of a company that's going to do this.
We've had a couple of companies we've talked to. We do have one in Indianapolis that's done some excellent work at very reasonable cost. And we know some other libraries, Indianapolis Public to be specific, who've worked with them quite extensively. We're very happy with what they do, and we plan to work with them specifically for the yearbook project.
Will they, it'll be searchable through our online?
Yes, we are, we're adopting what is, for a while, been known as the sort of industry standard for hosting digital content, and that's Content DM. And we'll be hosting all of our digital collections on Content DM, yeah.
And those things are also available through the Indiana State Library, so it's really a, an opportunity to make them quite accessible anywhere anyone might be. That's part of our goal.
Are we hosting our own Content DM or using the state library's?
We're hosting our own. Yeah, we'll have our own instance of Content DM, yeah.
And then we also give it to the state library?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Greer.
Thank you.
All in favor of approving the updates to the collection development policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next, do we have a motion to approve the creation of policy on epidemic, pandemic?
One in between.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed, I'm jumping the gun there. Do we have a motion to approve change to schedule policies and removal of portions of the checkout policy?
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Marilyn, can you summarize this?
I will. So the change to the checkout policy is really just a housekeeping thing. When we did the update to this in March, when we went fine-free, there was a, a portion that was added, which is just procedural, was not intended to be part of, of the policy. So this just takes it out. And the other piece of this is the update to the schedule itself that identifies all the policies, which we are responsible for.
Any questions on this? All in favor of approving the change to schedule policies and removal of portions of the checkout policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And now do we have a motion to approve the creation of the policy on epidemic, pandemic, public health, or emergency disrupting ability to report to work?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. I know a lot of work has gone into the creation of this. Marilyn, can you summarize the process and policy for us, please?
Yes, I will. So months ago, when this pandemic began, we did not have a policy that, like most institutions anyway, at that time, that really dealt with long-term disruption of any kind of service. So our guidelines and work really fell to what emergency policy we had in place at that time, which was intended for short-term events like weather things. So the State Board of Accounts has urged all governing bodies to create a policy such as this with broad language, so that it can be flexible enough to deal with the, the changing environment in which we know this pandemic has been, day by day, in many cases. So real-time changes can be, can be dealt with, because these policies, as you know, also must be approved by you as a board. And so we have, we follow those once they are in place. The State Board of Account further advised on several content areas and what should be part of this policy, and also that we should keep in mind the goals of having main operations remain as close to normal as possible, while considering the well-being of the public and staff. So this policy, which is shared with you tonight, has been reviewed by our legal counsel. This was also discussed with the Labor Management Council, and there were minor changes that were made to the first draft, and not all of the suggestions that were made by the LMC were incorporated. Those have been expressed to this board through the union, too. But then out of courtesy, we also shared this policy with all of our staff, so everyone has had an opportunity to see it. We wrote this policy with the benefit of living through working in a pandemic. And we better understand the limitations that our, our guidelines for emergency set up, and the problems that we encountered without the benefit of a policy like this. So this policy is really intended to help guide our decisions going forward in this pandemic and anything in the future. There are areas of protection for the staff, and there are also limitations in how work can be conducted to meet our main operations. So I am happy to walk you through this policy, if you like, or to answer specific questions, however you wish to go forward.
I guess I would like to walk you through it.
Okay.
If that's okay with everybody else.
So the purpose of this policy is really to establish a protocol by which we would operate if there were any long-term disruption of service. So that's obviously what we've experienced now, where we had to close for, for operation. So the other thing that, that it, as I said, from the State Board of Account, it also identifies that continuity or continuing operations is, is an important part of what we have to plan for. But we also have to assume that there are going to be changes in what we might be able to do and how we would be able to do it. So this policy outlines the different kinds of library service reductions that might take place or closure. So, and some of those could be mandated by order of public health or local areas, or at the discretion of this Board of Trustees, or at the, at the discretion of the library director. And there are several different closures. There could be complete closure, which obviously we had during this pandemic, where there were no people in the building except those that were approved by the director. And in some cases, that was based entirely on ensuring that the building, we were maintaining safety in the building, and that, that nothing was happening here, but no one else was in. It also could be library closure with essential services only, which we also had during this pandemic, where we had exempt staff who were working and other specific individuals. Some of those were vendors, and some of those were our staff who had to maintain continuity of our operations, pay payroll, make payroll, pay the, the bills that were coming in, ensuring that we were sending any documentation that was required by the state. Some things continue to go on, as you see, the budget didn't stop. Those things continued. There were also library closure with reduced services, where staff could work in the building or be assigned to provide services to customers in new ways, or work from home, all of which we've done during this pandemic. So these, just, it just continues to outline the ways in which people may continue to provide services while they're maintaining safety. It also identifies what happens if schools close. So in this policy, if Monroe County Community Schools or Richland Bean Blossom Schools close, it does not mean that the library would close necessarily. There might be, we might remain open unless there were other conditions that were being, that were met at the same time that would cause us to close. We have a section on impact on staff with childcare concerns. So in the event, as we're in now, where school districts or daycare closures occur, staff may choose to use their accrued time or take unpaid time off to stay at home, subject to any leave options that are provided by the federal, state, or local law, which at this point in time, there are FFCRA conditions for people to, for staff with children to be able to take time off.
Can I interrupt you real quick and ask a question?
Yes.
So at the part where you have school closures.
Yes.
Could that result in any type of limited closure at the library? Because right now, it says it doesn't, but what if, because we're talking about epidemic, pandemic-type things, could that result in limiting the services at the library?
Because of school closures?
Well, depending on what the reasoning is of the school closure.
I think that, I think that primarily what this means is that just because the schools close doesn't necessarily mean that the library will close. There could be limited services on a scale.
Okay.
I think that, I understand what she's talking about, because when I read that, it was basically.
We're open.
We're open, in spite of the schools being, so I think maybe wording it differently might be, I was confused when I read it, and I reread it and thought, hmm, does that mean that they're going to stay open? I could see situations where.
Depending on the reasoning, the school is closed.
Right, exactly, yeah.
There may need to be limited closure of the library.
But I understand after you just, if you said something, what you're meaning by that, but I'm not sure that that comes through.
It's clear.
Is the meaning.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because I read it as, we're going to be remaining open even if MCCSC and the school systems stay closed.
Except there, there is that clause that says, unless one of the closing conditions have ever met. So I'm assuming what that means is, you know, just that a school closing doesn't automatically trigger a library closing, but there are reasons why the library would close, and what, and the closing conditions are listed above.
And those are the, at the discretion of the library director, at the discretion of the library Board of Trustees, a mandate order or recommendation for reduced services or closure issued by Monroe County Health Department, Indiana State Department of Health, or other government officials. That's what you're referring to?
That's correct.
I just wonder if we shouldn't add the language.
I think it should be clarified in that statement right there.
That there could be reduced services, because it says we'll remain open. And when I think of remain open, I mean, I feel like that, to me, means all services are still available, but really, we have those.
Conditions.
Library closure options.
Okay. Well, it's. Okay. Well, it's type of closure. It could be any of the type of library closures and... I get, okay. That can be clarified. So, would this be better than, in the event Monroe County Community School corporate... Wait a minute.
I guess you could say, well, I don't know. It says we're...
I'm wondering, do we even need to address that?
Well, it came up immediately upon the schools closing this past time. So based on past experience.
Okay.
I guess I think, like, there are certain businesses, I'm thinking like the YMCA, that says, if the schools are closed, we do this. And if this happens, we do this. So I'm thinking it's just taking out that for us. Maybe just even saying, remain open with the possibility of reduced services. Or, you know...
Or perhaps we flip it.
Yes.
Perhaps we flip it and say, MCPL will follow library service reduction or closure as outlined above.
Yes. Because I feel like if someone were to read this and it said, remain open, and yet they couldn't enter the building...
I think flipping it is a clarifying statement.
Yeah, just...
Okay, so...
Instead of, we're reacting to the school corporations, we're reacting with the safety in mind of our people and the services. So I think flipping it would be a better way.
Okay. So it would be instead, MCPL... Lorraine, can you get this for me? MCPL will follow library service reductions or closure as noted above in the event of school closures.
Yes, yeah.
I think that...
Okay.
Leaves more flexibility for the library.
Tom's got a question here, or statement.
What if you changed the word MCPL will to may?
Yeah.
And then you get it back up to your conditions above?
Yeah.
That may be the simpler way of doing it.
Yeah.
Because will says, oh, we're going to stay open, no matter what.
May, and then you're referring back up to your conditions.
All right, so instead of will, it's may.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
So then, moving on to staffing and compensation during library closures. So, this one is obviously one of the most detailed areas of this policy, and really provides the guidelines or the guardrails for the way that we would work going into the future. So, one of the things that we struggled with when we were, when we closed in March, was that we did not have in place ways in which our staff could work from home immediately, and we went for several weeks without staff working. And so this policy sets in place expectations that staff would work from home until the library resumes full operation, and that work-from-home procedures may apply. Now, there's further in this. Those people, not all staff members can work from home. We do not have, every job that we have, every position that we have, there are those that have primary responsibilities that cannot be done from home. So we'll fall into that conversation as we go down, but just remember that as we walk through.
Can you clarify the third bullet point? That work activities within or below pay grade.
Mm-hmm.
Can you delineate what that means?
So, for instance, well, let me do the second bullet point and then do that one. So the second one is, all employees reporting for work onsite and/or actively working from home will be compensated for their regularly scheduled hours at the regular rate of pay for all hours' work. So in other words, if you have work that can be done from home, that extends the services of the library, then you would be paid your regular rate of pay. If you are not doing that work, you would not. MCPL reserves the right to assign staff to different locations, work arrangements, hours, or work activities within or below pay grades to maintain productive assignments and to perform priority functions. So just as a specific thing, right now, we have thousands of books that need to be re-shelved. That's actually at the lowest level of our staffing. Anybody can do it right now, because it needs to be done. So we would, we reassign, and we have other people who are pulling books for curbside delivery and shelving books, because that's the priority work that we have. Employees for whom work is not available will continue to earn compensation for up to 30 calendar days at their regularly scheduled hours and rate of pay, after which they may use accrued paid leave or request a leave of absence without pay. So, if we found ourselves in a situation where we were at home again for a closure, and those folks who do not have work from home would continue to be paid for 30 days at their regular rate, and after that, they would not, they could either take a leave of absence, or if they had accrued time, they could take that.
And, let's say, for example, they decided that, could they file for unemployment?
If they were unemployed.
Okay. But they can't get any compensation unless they take, if they take leave of absence without pay, there'd be no compensation, correct?
That's correct. If they didn't have any accrued time.
Would they have to quit then to get unemployment?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure. Would they have to...
It would be like a layoff, right? I mean, it wouldn't be that they would have to quit, because if you quit...
It'd be like furloughed, right?
Furloughed, yeah. It'd be furloughed.
Layoff, I think it'd be furloughed.
Yeah, which...
I think it's the same thing.
It is the same thing, a nicer word, I think. But, yeah, they wouldn't be effectively employed with us to be able to draw unemployment.
Right. So, laid off, furloughed, they don't get any compensation from the state or unemployment or anything?
They would get unemployment if they were laid off or furloughed.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, when you're laid off from work, and it says, sorry, you're not getting paid, and you can go to unemployment.
So then they can file for unemployment?
If they're laid off, yes.
Okay.
So there could be options that would be...
It's not their choice. I mean, they're not choosing. We're saying...
So, the question is, the way I read this, is that because of the pandemic, they can't do their work at home, they've taken 30 days, and they've gotten paid at the regular rate. After 30 days, which we know that's a possibility, they go home. It is probably something we need to think about in the policy to say, if you're furloughed or laid off, so that they can get unemployment. And this doesn't address that, right?
I think the next bullet point might have it.
Oh, okay.
So, in extreme conditions, layoff options may be considered. So if we found ourselves in that situation where 30 days are here, it's not looking good, then yeah, it would be in the best interest of those staff members to take a layoff.
And they choose that, or you choose that?
No, they can't choose that.
Yeah, if they choose, they're not going to qualify for unemployment.
Right.
If you quit, you don't get unemployment.
Oh, okay. So then, you choose that. You choose a layoff, and then they get unemployment?
Right.
Okay.
And that next bullet point does address that.
And so then the next one, when a status of returning to work onsite has been established, all employees will return to work at the library unless they've consulted with Human Resources and a determination of eligibility for an accommodation to work from home, or medical leave of absence, or other leave or options are available or necessary, as may be required by law. So in other words, it's when the library returns to more normal operations, even if those are still limited, people would be, they would have to take some sort of leave or have an accommodation or return to work. So, employees for whom work is available but who are unavailable or unwilling to work onsite or from home may request to utilize available accrued personal paid leave hours or request a leave of absence without pay. There are two policies that are noted there, and we do have a couple of updates to those policies, which we'll talk about later. During a library closure with essential services only, any non-exempt staff member required to work in the building would receive premium pay. That's part of our emergency policy now. That's one of the things that tripped us up early in this pandemic, was that we were under that. Everyone earned a premium rate of pay if they were asked to work, until we met and changed that. So this sets that up from the beginning, that if you are required to work, you would be paid if no one else is working, but once everyone begins to work, it's at a regular rate of pay.
So even if you're working at home, you still get that premium rate of pay?
If, well, if it is essential, excuse me, essential services only, and you're required to work in the building.
In the building, okay.
Because everyone would be working from home. So, it is to the effect of, to ensure safety...
Is it kind of like hazard pay?
I'm sorry?
Is it like hazard pay?
I didn't hear you.
Hazard pay, is that...
Yeah, kind of like that, right. Because if, we're assuming that this is related to their health and safety, and that's the reason that we're paying them that...
And it does say, in the building, so...
Right. During an emergency, staff previously scheduled and who receive approval, personal leave, and who are now available to work, but they're not taking that. I mean, certainly, we have plenty of people who fell into that category this time, where their vacations were canceled. They can rescind that. They don't have to take that time off. We won't penalize them for that. And staff will continue to accrue personal and sick leave up to the maximum time allowed, but the accrual caps will remain in place. And in the event the library remains closed for an extended period of time, this board may review and modify this policy just to ensure fiscal stability of the library.
I have another thought or question. I don't see, and I did read it, but I could have missed it. Is there anything that talks about, you know, when we're in this pandemic, when we're in this crisis, the employees who do take a leave and they decide to travel, is there anything, because I know a lot of companies are saying that if you choose to travel, then you have to think about the safety of coming back into a building and working, if you've traveled or flown or something. Is there anything that we need to address with that?
We don't have anything in this. I know what you're talking about, travel policies that are in other places. We haven't addressed that in this policy.
I think this is more, it's supposed to be more generic, so not just for this pandemic, but any similar situation. So there may be specific things like that, where you have to cross that bridge when you get to it. Or, you know, there are county and...
Oh, yeah.
Other guidelines that would address those sorts of things, I think.
In many cases, I think that, although this is somewhat specific, there's a lot of the why in here, as opposed to just the how, because it changes depending upon, even as we began the pandemic, we've learned things each week that we've changed. So, it's not as specific as that. So this goes on to say, just in the event of any cancellations of our programs or services, the ways that we would communicate with the community and our staff and others. And then, health and safety measures. We do have health and safety protocols and procedures in place. That, too, has been a living document, and will continue to be, just as we learn more about it. And then the responsibility of library operations. So if I'm sick and I can't perform my duties, then the next person in line would be our associate director. Since we don't have an associate director right now, then there's a tertiary line that would say that the Board of Trustees would identify a member among the leadership team who would lead administratively at that point.
Can I ask, what were the things that the union wanted in here that aren't in here?
Mm-hmm. If I can find that. They recommend that, in the impact on staff with childcare, that, so we recommend the following addition to the policy. In the event school districts or daycare closures occur due to a public health emergency, and satisfactory work accommodations cannot be made, staff may choose to use their accrued leave or take unpaid time off, stay at home, subject to any leave options. So they are suggesting the addition of satisfactory work accommodations cannot be made.
Marilyn, can you repeat that again? I wasn't quite clear on that.
That, the addition of the statement, satisfactory work accommodations cannot be made. This would go in the sentence of, in the event school districts or daycare closures occur due to a public health emergency, and then this addition, and satisfactory work accommodations cannot be made, staff may choose to use their accrued leave or take unpaid time off.
What does that mean?
Yeah, that was my question, too.
Satisfactory to who?
Us or them?
Well, I think that satisfactory, that's, it's a very broad term, satisfactory work accommodations. So, our work accommodations are based on job descriptions.
But it doesn't change the outcome.
It does.
They could still use their accrued leave or take unpaid time off, with or without that statement, correct?
Yeah, this is a qualify. It's better for them now, isn't it? It's like, hey, I'm just going to take my unpaid leave. My leave option, I just take what I got.
So their options don't change with that addition, correct?
Well, yes, it would, because they would be paid. They wouldn't have to take paid time off.
They wouldn't have to take paid time off because...
Because they would be working. Satisfactory work accommodations, which I assume are work-from-home accommodations.
Right, but I mean, that's, there's already very few people who can do that.
That's correct.
I mean, if I'm security...
You can't, there isn't one. That's correct.
Right, I can't work from home. So it kind of, yeah, all right.
The next one was, well... Staffing and compensation during library closures. We believe the phrase for whom work is not available needs to be better defined. They advocated for removal of that bullet point entirely. And last, on health and safety measures, they recommended the following addition to the policy. Within two weeks of a public health emergency, the current health and safety procedures will be updated and shared with all staff, and will include a response plan and safety measures related to the current health crisis. The response plan will contain information about how the library would move forward and fall backward through phases of reopening. I can tell you right now that two weeks into this pandemic, we couldn't have done that. We still can't do that, and with all good faith and understanding, because things change too fast.
I agree with that. That's very difficult to put in writing, the conditions are continuing to change. I feel like that would qualify for most pandemics. I mean, most things, most pandemics would be caused by an unknown virus or illness that we don't know enough about to be able to react to it.
Right, and so certainly, as a living document, we add to it and change it as we learn more.
I mean, we still have that clause in here, that we have the right to adapt and change this to certain situations, that that phrase is in here. I, too, would have loved to know, two weeks into this, what a plan was. But that's very difficult. I understand the staff wanting that information, but I think that's difficult to promise.
It's an uneasy time for everyone.
Thank you for walking us through that, Marilyn. Are there more questions or discussion on this?
All in favor of adopting this new policy on epidemic pandemic, public health, or emergency disrupting ability to report to work, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it? And, do we have a motion to approve updates to personnel policies 2.09, 3.20, 3.21, 4.11, and 4.12?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. These are updates to reflect what we just approved, Marilyn?
They do. So they further clarify, based on the information... They do, so they further clarify based on the information that's in the pandemic policy and they just refer back and forth to one another. There is one change that we'll once again in the minutes. And so for one of the policies that Kyle's going to introduce, there is a line and that was, that was added that identifies an additional category of staff. So we'll put that in the minutes as a, as a change to what you see in the packet. But I'll let her describe them.
Okay. Just real quick overview of the changes because a lot of it was housekeeping. 2.09, basically there, it clarifies the hour status for our part-time employees and regular benefit and non-benefited 15 to 19-hour employees. It accurately reflects the long-term practices related to our benefit administration and clarifies how our 15 to 19-hour staff fit into our, our structure. Any questions about that? 3.20, emergency closing. So that's where we're identifying that is related to emerg, to actual short-term emergencies versus the public health issues we're having right now. And it includes language specific to the long-held practice of paying both full-time, part-time, and part-time, non-benefited, regular staff for scheduled work hours, not work during an emergency. So that's, that's been a continuing thing. We've been doing it. We're just formalizing it in this policy.
So that means if an employee comes to work at eight o'clock in the morning, library closes at 10, they get paid for the whole day?
Exactly.
And so this is the policy where we've added the, the line. Is that correct, Kyle?
Mm-hmm, yes, on this one it is.
So the, so on 3.2, we will add?
So right now, it's midway down. Any time off from scheduled work will be paid to regular full-time, regular part-time, and the new part is in regular, non-benefited, fitted, part-time employees affected by the facility closing. As long as they're scheduled. Okay, and then 3.21, again, we added one of those authorized designee, just to give us some flexibility, unknown events. And the other edits were actually grammatical. They're not anything specific that would change anything. And then 4.11 and 4.12, those both deal with staff. 4.11 is 20-hour plus staff. And the 4.11 applies to those working less than 20 hours, which is the 15 to 19. We changed the unpaid time leave request limit for non-benefitted staff from four weeks to two weeks. And cross-reference leave without pay with a pandemic policy language. A little background on this is that at one time, our 15-hour to 19-hour staff were considered temporary and they were mainly high school people. And it just kinda got inherited, but as, you know, as times gone on, we're, you know, we know they're an important part of our staff and we have people across the spectrum. This isn't a temporary job.
Your 4.12 and the second line at the very end?
Mm-hmm.
You've underlined the two is the new number, but you don't, oh, is it four? Is that a strikeout?
Yeah, it's hard to see the scratch on the four.
Yeah, okay, good. Well, otherwise it was gonna become 24.
Right. The line hit right at the
Actually, when you cross out, it's interesting when you, when you cross out the four, it just
Just looks like four?
Looks like four.
Exactly.
Guess I've never run across that, sorry.
That's all right. Anything else?
Any other questions for Kyle?
Thank you, Kyle. All in favor of updating the personnel policies listed in our agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Tom, I have a question. I think we understood in approving the last policy that we were adopting your suggestion of changing that will to may. Okay, do we do another motion to amend? Okay, do we have a motion to change will to may on page 118 as discussed previously?
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor of amending the policy as moved? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. We now have our update. Welcome Greer back to the podium to give us an update on access and content services, reminding me what ACS stands for.
Thank you. So I'd like to talk briefly about collections and access since 2019 and then talk about 2020's unique circumstances and specifically the measures we've taken with regard to access to collections. Then I'd like to briefly introduce Steph Niemeyer, our ACS Assistant Manager, who will share a quick follow-up on our Linkso AMH and how it's impacted workflows for ACS staff. So first, let's talk about 2019. Last year, we saw a continuation of the trend toward more demand for digital resources. This is a gradual trend in that we're still seeing strong use of physical collections and anecdotally still hearing consistent calls for more physical copies of books in particular. But the shift toward digital engagement with library resources is unmistakable. And it will continue to inform our collection development work as we explore more and better ways to connect with our users electronically. For this reason and for the numerous and suggestive reasons associated with the current pandemic, we expect that this trend will lead to a concerted focus on digital collection development over the next decade and will almost certainly see us investing more in this area while still maintaining a strong and responsive collection of physical materials for our community. Last year also found us focusing on a few special projects in ACS. First, we started dipping our toes significantly into the library of things world. So what we mean by that are things beyond books and films and traditional consumption-based media and more interactive things like adventure packbacks, which we were fortunate enough to be able to explore through the Pioneer Grant. Of course, things like wireless hotspots, which we're continuing to slowly add more and more copies of as the demand remains pretty strong out in the community. We are reprocessing our adult book club kits with better bins for transport and more consistent circulation procedures. And of course, the seed library through the generosity of the Archer Foundation has found us exploring ways to introduce into the library of things collections, sustainable, interactive pieces. So we're very excited about those things and we started working in 2019 on ways to house the library of things collections and make them immediately accessible for people who come into the library and browse and hopefully surprise those library users who don't quite yet think of the library as a place to check out things. We also worked on an updated visual merchandising plan, which takes a more holistic approach to developing and scheduling meaningful and diverse displays of library materials across all of our locations. And ultimately, to help us better coordinate these displays with programs, library and community events, and indeed global affairs. And then finally, as we talked about before, we formalized our digitization program aimed at identifying unique physical collections of local or regional significance. And we did get a start on those yearbooks, which we plan to resume as soon as the time is ready. So I'd like to go ahead and introduce Steph Niemeyer, who is here, our Assistant Manager. She's going to give you a brief update on the Linkso Automatic Materials Handler.
Hi, everyone, and thanks. The Linkso sorter was installed in October of 2019. Since then, it has been a vast improvement to our workflows, which directly impacts staff and patron experience. To summarize a few changes associated with having the Linkso sorter, the sorter RFID pad reads and sorts items with greater accuracy, which reduces the number of problem items sent to our exceptions bin and that translates to fewer items that need to be sorted a second time. The ergonomic bins into which sorted items are dropped have been programmed to balance the stacks of sorted items, which ensures that each bin fills to capacity when, when it fills to capacity, which doesn't always. Again, reducing redundant work of checking items in multiple times, which if the bin is full, it goes to our problem bin, which then we resort. Finally, it's fast. Anecdotally, the number of seconds we have to wait between physically placing each item on the conveyor has decreased from about five to seven seconds on the Biblioteca sorter to two to four seconds with the Linkso sorter. When we have an efficient sorter, we can check in items at a faster rate and because this sorter requires fewer staff to run it at all times, material handlers have been able to maintain a 48-hour or below cart turnaround time since its installation. When we're able to maintain 48-hour or below cart turnaround time, we can more efficiently satisfy holder requests for patrons. It also ensures that items can be easily found on the shelves. To offer a glimpse into our daily work, in March 2020, from the 1st to the 13th, of course, our shelving average was about 35 carts a day. And so far in August, we've sent 25,384 items through the sorter. The Linkso sorter is also equipped with a web client that I and my staff can use to check when errors occur and it will tell us what or where the problem lies, which has been really helpful. For more significant issues, the Linkso hotline staff have been extremely helpful in assisting remotely. So overall, the Linkso sorter has been, again, a vast improvement to our workflows, our efficiency, and also to the aesthetics of our workroom. It's pretty. Thank you for helping us acquire it and for your continued support of our efforts to serve our staff and community the best that we can. I'll pass it back to Greer.
Thank you, Steph. So this is a different year. So I'd like to talk briefly about what happened in March, how we responded and what we've done since then. Around March 14th, 15th, 16th, Marilyn, I can't remember the exact date, we all stopped and realized not only do we need to close the building and send staff home to keep everyone safe, keep the public safe by not letting them come into the building, we quickly realized we can't continue to circulate physical items throughout the community. So once we hit that point, we said, what are we going to do? The most obvious thing to do was to focus our efforts on enhancing our digital collections. And that's what we did. We purchased additional licenses for individual eBooks, e-audiobooks, and other digital titles by request. We continue to look for and promote various access enhancement programs from larger companies like Overdrive, Cloud Library through Biblioteca, and Hoopla, though many of these are short-term. And we have focused the bulk of our e-library promotional and funding efforts on some of our most popular platforms and have seen a very impressive return on that effort. Specifically, Hoopla, which is our most popular platform for e-audiobooks. We raised our daily access cap of $402 to $600 a day. Now, that doesn't mean a whole lot to most people until you hit that cap at about six o'clock at night. So that has made a difference. We raised the individual limits per month from eight per patron to 12. And by the way, about 10% of Hoopla users hit that individual cap every month. We have not hit a system-wide cap this year yet. So the increase in the daily limit has helped. We've since seen a 33% increase in Hoopla use since March when we put these changes into effect. And about a 16% increase in unique patrons using Hoopla. So that's from about 1,800 unique patrons a month to 2,100 unique patrons a month. There was a temporary jump in new Hoopla users from March to June. We went from about 75 a month to 100 or so new users per month, but that has since leveled off. Canopy, our unique art and documentary educational video streaming service, we also raised our monthly cap from 10 streaming videos per patron to 20. And we took our system-wide streaming cap, which is 700 streams across the system per month, and we made it unlimited. The result is 150% increase in Canopy use since March. And similarly, 150% increase in Canopy unique users since March. Freegal is our music downloading platform. And for a long time, we've kinda thought about adding a streaming component to Freegal rather than just the free MP3 downloads, but we haven't done it. And the pandemic forced us to think hard about that. So we did add streaming functionality in early April and a remarkable 277% increase in use is due to this change. So we're very happy with that. And I don't mind saying this aloud because the good folks at Library Ideas who own Freegal probably aren't watching. It's probably saving Freegal for this library, the ability for patrons to stream. So we're happy about that. And then finally, with RB Digital, our popular e-magazine platform, we opened it up to all available titles effective June of this year. We've seen over 100% increase in use of RB Digital as a result. And most recently, Overdrive has acquired RB Digital. This is a good thing because we've had digital magazines through Overdrive and RB Digital and we have to do a fair amount of work in making sure there's not too much overlap, but a good degree of overlap in the high-demand titles so that folks who get bumped from RB Digital for one title can go to Overdrive and perhaps find it there. The fact that Overdrive has acquired RB Digital will streamline some of that for us, but it remains to be seen whether or not it improves the experience for users. So we're watching that very closely. When it came time to figure out how to resume access to our physical collections, obviously the curbside model for checkout was the way to go. Plenty of retailers were doing that, plenty of other libraries were doing it. So we had a precedent, precedent to look for, excuse me. So our goal was to make it as contactless as possible. We started slow and steady with a few pickup slots in the vestibule here at Main and then at the vestibule in Elletsville, with lots of manual appointment management on the part of staff working the phones all day long. And that was huge work and they were inundated with calls and voicemails for setting up appointments to pick up their curbside holds. We also realized that it's very, very likely that the public is going to want something like a contactless hold pickup solution well after we have COVID under control. So we decided to invest in online reservation software so that the public can do this themselves. We invested in Kipira Tech in, I want to say it was late June. Few bugs, but has recently been acquired by OCLC. So we're hoping to see some big improvements in the way Kipira Tech performs very soon. And that did indeed reduce, if not completely eliminate, the need for phone staff to manage online reservations and pickup times for the public. One of the biggest challenges we've been facing is with regard to returns of materials. As you know, we weren't allowing returns for a while. We just asked the public to please hold on to your materials until we're ready to accept them because we don't know enough about the virus and its persistence rate on inanimate surfaces. We know a lot more now. And so we started with the decision to quarantine physical materials for at least five days after the Realm Projects research came out. It suggested four days was more than sufficient for most material types. That's what we've stuck to since then. But the reality of our staffing situation is that we're nowhere near four days in checking in materials. We're more like two weeks. And so our goal, once everybody's back on staff, is to plow through those returns, get them checked in, get them back on the shelves, and back out in the hands of the public. So for now, even though we have a four-day quarantine period, and if you take a look into the sort room on the first floor, you'll see what that looks like, it's really more like two weeks. What that means is that a lot of people who have returned their materials don't have those materials coming off their account. And we do have borrowing limits. So we have asked staff to please override those borrowing limits as needed, case-by-case basis, so that the public is not penalized for having returned something that we haven't yet checked in for our own reasons. So that's where we are with returns. We expect, again, the curbside model to be popular well after we're through this pandemic. And so our planning for the future is going to include something like a curbside service.
What is the distinction between a new curbside service after the pandemic and what people could do before picking up holds, you know, the pickup window?
I think the distinction is interacting with staff and possibly other library users. If we give people a place like the vestibule here at Main now, where we ask them to come in one at a time and grab their items off the shelf with little or no interaction with us, there's an element of safety in that and that you don't have to ask someone for help, someone doesn't have to hand you something, you can come in and grab it and go.
Who's been using that service? I'd like to also add touch. Like, I'm not having to come in and touch the circulation system
Right.
that other people have touched.
Yes, right, it's a good point. So the self-check stations, which are easily 90% of our circulation, there's no need to do that. We check it out for people themselves. Whereas when we do reopen and there's access to the holds, most people are going to grab their holds, go to self-check, and leave. We expect that there'll be demand for both. And so we need to find a way to be able to sustain both of those services.
Thank you.
Our work has used that service a great deal in the last several weeks.
Works real well.
Thank you. Pleased to hear it. Staff are working incredibly hard to make it work and that's actually one of the, we talk about silver lining sometimes, it's hard to talk about a silver lining in the midst of a pandemic, but there are some. And one of them is that staff who've worked together to make curbside work so effectively have an incredible team-building experience. I mean, they're working on the floor together to, it's basically a new service. It's almost akin to like fast food. We're just moving very, very quickly. It's an assembly line kind of process and a lot of us are learning how to do that in some, in some degree for the first time and working closely with each other, kind of under the pressure of we've got to serve the public as best we can, let's get this right, let's make people happy, has resulted in a whole lot of team-building that we may not have seen otherwise. So that is a bright spot, I think.
I appreciate you.
And I was, I used that service too and I was surprised. I wanted to check out a book and I found it and it was in and I think at the Ellisville Library, it was like three, I could sign up for a time to come three hours later.
We've gotten a little bit better. Yep. We can do same day in some cases. Some days we're booked days out, so it kind of just depends. Yeah. But yeah. We try to move fast, that is for sure.
Do we hit those Hoopla limits every day of the year? Are there days where we?
We were until this year when we raised the caps. We actually raised our cap from $315 a day to $402 a day effective January and we hadn't hit any caps. Then we raised it again in response to the pandemic. We still haven't hit those daily caps. We do have about, like about 10% of our users hit their individual caps every month, but we haven't had those daily caps hit.
Any other questions for Greer? Well, thank you for that update and thanks for your flexibility and inventiveness, you and your staff and, you know, inventing new ways to serve our patrons during this crisis.
Thank you very much.
It's now time for public comment. If members of the public would like to address the board, please come to the podium and state your name and share your thoughts with us.
Hello, my name is Ron Kleese. I'm a 21-year patron of this wonderful institution. I do have a problem, however, with one thing that you're going to do and that is the Branch Library at Bachelor Middle School. I was glad to hear this evening that the impact on the trees has been reduced. That's really good. I don't know what that means. I don't know how many trees will be cut. I'm here to ask you to reduce the impact on those trees to zero. Those trees were not planted by landscapers. Those trees didn't really belong to a school district. They belonged to the children who planted them. Starting in 1999, I was working at Bachelor Middle School in Special Education and what a wonderful experience it was for not just our special ed kids, but for all the students who came there to have a hands-on experience that they could relate to photosynthesis, to the water cycle, to all these kind of things and they were doing something to aid their environment. Now, those 12, 11, 12, 13-year-olds are now adults with, in many cases, their own children. Imagine how it can be to inspiration to your own kid to go down and see those beautiful trees, that great big forest down there at Bachelor and say, look, I did that when I was a kid, I did that. We expect more of you, too. But reducing is fine. I'm saying, suggesting, reduce it to zero. Reduce it to zero. That belonged to those children who planted them. And we all know the importance that trees play and the environment, the water cycle, the oxygen cycle, all of these kind of things. So we shouldn't be cutting down, it's a bad example to set for this institution to set, to cut down many trees that were planted by, by schoolchildren, all right? And we're about to be, have our income taxes increased here in the city of Bloomington to support climate change. What better thing for this institution to do and say, oh, we're not cutting down any of those great trees down there. We're going to change this somehow. We're going to reconfigure. We're going to do something to prevent that from happening. So I would ask you to do everything you can to just reduce cutting those wonderful trees to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kleese, and thank you for your work with those children at Bachelor Middle School.
Hi there. Good evening. My name's John. I'm the, I'm an employee here at the library. I'm also the president of the, the local union. I had a public statement written, but I'm basically going to abandon it because it's, it's, well, I just, I'm learning on the fly as we go, so I appreciate any affordances there. Essentially, I want to just communicate two things, I think. And again, I'm learning on the fly and I'm reading the public comment policy, so I'm hoping I'm staying within that as I talk here. I'm also compounded by the fact that I've been sheltering in place basically since day one of this, so public speaking is not my strong suit to begin with. Also, yeah. So anyways, one of the things that I wanted to just briefly communicate was that, you know, we, we, as a union, have not made too many appearances at board meetings anytime recently, but we are here today because of the pandemic policy that was passed. We wanted to sort of show a support for that. We actually have a number of people that are unfortunately sitting out in the atrium because there's just not enough seating in here, so that was a little unfortunate, but that's, you know, it's cool we came. The, the, I'm really appreciative of any of the discussion that happened today surrounding the union's viewpoints on that. Yeah, a lot of those policy suggestions were not super necessarily well-written or, you know, we're not, we're not necessarily policy writers, but I'm glad that that came up in discussion, so I just wanted to express the thanks for that. The other thing that I kind of broadly wanted to express, and I'm sort of here tasked to represent a number of people that couldn't come today, is just staff's concern with the trajectory of reopening in general. For a while, we've been on, and again, learning, not sure how this follows, whether the board is like very policy-driven and you don't really discuss this stuff or if this is procedural, but I'm just going to say it and let, rein me in if, if you need to. We've, we've been on a rotating three-team structure for a while now within the library where staff are afforded, two weeks of work from home and then they come in and do a week in the building and that sort of has this like nice built-in quarantine aspect to it during a pandemic. We've also been able to just generate a lot of really interesting, innovative ways to provide services during, during a closure. Recently, we sort of heard that the, the library is going to be transitioning into an all-staff-on-site approach and that is in an attempt to sort of expand services. So that's, that is a worthy goal. I'm just here to express that staff are really concerned about that, that move in general. Having all staff on site just has staff feeling potentially unsafe. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thanks for your work with the union.
Hi, good evening. My name's Adam Scoughton. I also work here at the library, but I'm a materials handler and I've worked here for about a year and I also, I was outside, I wasn't really able to follow all the discussion on the pandemic policy, but I thought I would share some concerns that I had. I'm also concerned a little bit about the, the trajectory of bringing everyone in at one time. But I would like to say that, you know, working at the library, I've, I've, it's been a great learning experience and I appreciate everything the library does and what it provides to this community and more than I could have ever imagined. But more importantly, I've come to appreciate and respect the many people who work every day to ensure the library functions efficiently and provides a high quality of service. I've come to know my coworkers slowly but surely over the several months and they've treated me kindly and welcomed me as a valued colleague. But I feel like I owe them the respect to say that, like, I am concerned for their future here at the library and I am afraid for their health and safety and for the security of their employment should Monroe County face another crisis. We're seeing in the news a lot of universities having to close down because of spread of the virus coming on rapidly and we know Bloomington specifically has been identified as an extremely vulnerable community to face another outbreak. I've heard it said that despite the dangers of the library is a necessary service and therefore is in no other position but to expand its services with the whole team back on staff. But knowing what we know, it does seem inevitable that there will be another spread and the library may well have to, have to close again. And I'm concerned with, with the pandemic, pandemic policy that people who are unable to return after 30 days or not able to work on-site because of vulnerabilities that they might, might lose their jobs at that point. I have to say that, that I firmly believe that it's, it's not right for people to be, to, to be threatened with the loss of their job because of their vulnerability, because this is not really just a biological problem, but is fundamentally a social problem. And we've seen a lot of institutions that have not been, been taking responsibility for the spread of the virus and now a lot of the most marginalized people in our society are paying the price for it. And that does include many people that are my coworkers. And I'd just point out that the words safety and inclusiveness are mentioned twice in the library's goals and vision. And unfortunately, to not protect the employment of marginalized people in our society is not inclusive and to increase capacity at this peril, perilous moment is not safe. I believe the library, library has much more to gain standing on those principles than in expanding services at this, with everyone in the building at this time. That's why I think any emergency plan should guarantee the health, safety and livelihood of all the library's employees. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Adam.
Adam, thank you, Adam. Thanks for your work here at the library. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye. The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.